If you're not here for the current... Respectfully, if I can get everybody's attention, knock, 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 knock. We're moving forward. If you're here for this application, thank you. If you're not, can you please give us the quietness? Okay. And for those who are interested, we just made a quick decision that we're going to stay tonight and try to get through all of the agenda and as much of the administrative session tonight. It will be a late night, but we've universally decided we're going to try to get it all done. Okay? The next application is 993 Honey Spot Road. There's two parts to it. I'm gonna bring... Can you bring those both up? Read those both together. Mr. Fuller?
Oh, yes, ma'am, Chair. I'll bring both together. First...
Mr. Fuller?
It's listed as our agenda as number five, but I know we changed the order. 993 Honey Spot Road, petition of Panache Auto Care, pardon if I butchered the pronunciation, seeking a general repair's license for a motor vehicle repair facility in an MA district. In addition to that, Agenda Item Number Six, 993 Honey Spot Road, petition of Zero to Sixty Motorsports seeking a general repair's license for a motor vehicle repair facility in MA district.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Do you want to present... Do you want to handle both of these applications together, or do you want to present them separately?
I think we'll go together because we're the same property.
Okay.
And we're seeking the same thing, so...
Very good.
...we have everyone's time, and it is.
Very good. Okay, you wanna... How do you want to do this? You want to start and tell us about the two properties and what's the difference?
All right, well, I'll start. So our vision, basically, well, taking over this property was, this was actually a completely... An empty building with just a skeleton. We came in and we brought this building back to life, spent a lot of money to bring it a completely new look. It's actually an auto salon. So basically, when you go into a property like that, it just gives you that glamorous look into industrial zone, which does not mean like a mechanic shop or anything like that. You go in there and you see what kind of services and things that we're providing. There's only two companies in whole state of Connecticut, actually, that they're doing right now. And the experience... We are actually trying to sell an experience versus a product. So that's our main motto. And the kind of clientele we're handling is actually an average $2,000 customer versus... That's our average customer projection and what it is right now. So that kind of gives out a big quality of business in an area where everything is really bad, because I have seen and I've heard that the road on Honey Spot has been not paved ever since 1987, and I don't know why, because nobody cares about that area. But that's what people say. I don't say that. But for us to go in there and give out a really new outlook to the business and people who have walked into our place, even from a delivery person to new customers, have loved what we have done to the building. And our motto, basically, is to progress into a one-stop-shop. So like, we don't have to send somebody, because if they're coming in with a high-end car and wants to get stuff done, but wants to get some few other tweaks done, which are... That's why we are only applying for a general repair, which means like our average jobs are about two to three hours. It's not anything hardcore. And so they can just get it done at the same spot, rather than trying to look for another mechanic or anything. So that's our intention.
Is that the same... What's the word? Business model for both of the two applications here?
Yeah.
This is Will. My name is Sachin Anan. My name is Sachin Anan. I'm actually representing this application for our partner, Zero to Sixty Motorsports. His name is Raviv, and he was out of town, so he couldn't make it to the meeting tonight, so he asked me to represent him. Just a little background of his company. He deals with most of the exotic used cars. So basically, he's in business to sell anything from like BMWs, Audis, Lamborghinis, and all that stuff. So as he mentioned earlier, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to bring a new outlook to Stratford. That's how our vision is. And we are a group of three people. We are engineers. We are professionals, and we are putting all our energy in to bring something new to the area to offer, which was not offered before.
So what's the difference between the two applications?
He does... As a Panache Auto Work, they work more into like auto salon. And we... I'm... Because this person, Zero to Sixty Motorsports, has a used car dealership in Farmington. He wants to bring the license here. That's all. That's what he wants to sell out of here, out of this location, because he wants to give the outlook to high-end cars with our... Working with us together. That's all.
So one is for auto sales, and the other one is for repair?
Yes.
Is that a general license, though, for auto sales?
It's supposed to be used car dealership. Used car.
Used car.
The first one I get is a repair shop.
With a general repair.
We're gonna answer... We're trying to answer a question on it. If you'd just give us some...
So Panache Auto has applied for a general repair's license. And Honey Spot... Oh, I'm sorry. Zero to Sixty is applying for a used car dealer.
Okay.
So they applied correctly.
Okay, so we got that pretty cleared up. One's a used car dealership application. The other one is a general repair application in the same location.
Yes.
But just two separate... Are you different owners or partnership, or just using the same spot?
It's two different LLCs. Panache Auto Work operates separately as auto salon slash performance, and Zero to Sixty is a US dealership.
Sharing the same space?
Sharing the same space.
Okay.
I have a point of order or a point of question. It's on Zero to Sixty Motorsports. It's on the agenda.
As a general license?
As a general repair.
That was the reason why we asked the question.
Which means that was in the paper, in the legal notice.
So we'd have to determine whether or not it could go forward. They may have to wait till next month if it was advertised as a used car... I'm sorry, as a general repair's license as opposed to a used car dealer.
Yeah, it's not so much an issue of Agenda Item Five, but with Agenda Item Six.
Yep, exactly.
Did you follow what... In spite of the noise, did you follow what was going on? I believe you provided the application properly, but when we noticed it in the paper and in on the agenda, the Zero to Sixty Motorsports was presented as a general repairs license, not as a auto sales application. So I think it falls on our office of how it was advertised. Okay? Given that we... Did somebody say... Given that we have not put it forward properly, okay, we can't hear legally the Zero to Sixty. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Florick, any comment?
My only...
Can you... Little help here?
I was just trying to look into that. My feeling is that any defect in notice of what the application is for is a problem at a public hearing, because it doesn't notify the public correctly as to what's being considered.
Okay.
Continuum and to advertise.
Yes, the Zero to Sixty will have to be a continuum into the next month for another public hearing. Okay? I'm getting to the point that this is not... We're not going to be able to have a meeting if this keeps up.
Let me try to shut off the system.
Can we shut it off and turn it back on?
Shut the microphones off.
That's what he's gonna do. He's gonna shut it off. It's hot. All right. We're gonna do as much as we can. If it becomes unbearable, then we'll have to make a decision, but we'll try to work with it as best we can. We can move forward on the Panache Auto Care, but we cannot move tonight, but we cannot move forward on the Zero to Sixty. Okay? Which means we can hear the Panache, make a decision on it tonight, but the second part of that will be for next month. Is that okay? Or do you want to continue both? I would suggest you go forward with one and do the other one separately.
I hit the stickers. Do they have a certificate of mailing?
Did you do separate mailings, mailings of certificates?
I have one of this. I don't know the procedure of...
We did get two separate mails, yes. That's what...
Okay, did you bring your mailing of certificate of mailing? Nope, those are... They look like little tickets that everybody that you... That shows that you sent a letter to all your budding neighbors. Okay, how about this? We're gonna do a continuum on both those applications, and we're gonna allow Mr. Herbansky to kind of bring you up to date of what you need to do for a certificate of mailing. Okay? Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to... Well, this is a continuum. I don't have a motion on that. I don't need to make a motion, second thought. All right. Mr. Herbansky, could you talk to him? We're just gonna keep the public hearing open. Okay. Today's interesting. The next property is 96 Chapel Street, Mr... I'll just read it. I'm here. 96 Chapel Street, petition of the Hindu Cultural Center, seeking a special case approval to expand an existing religious institution in an RS1 district. Yeah, no problem. Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Mrs. Pippen, Madam Secretary, members of the commission. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn, and we have offices only in Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Hindu Cultural Center, 96 Chapel Street, Stratford. This time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits, which I've just handed to each of you, to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. The first two exhibits of which are photos. Exhibit one is a photo of the front of the building. Now, this is the old Universal... Excuse me, Unitarian Universalist Church on Chapel Street. And Exhibit one is taken from the front. Exhibit two is a photo of the building taken from the rear parking lot. And as I indicated, I am here on behalf of the Hindu Cultural Center. They are currently occupying 96 Chapel Street, and we have applied to this commission for special case approval pursuant to zoning regulations, Sections 4.1.6.3 and 20.2, in order to allow a church, parish hall, or other religious use in a residential zone subject to special case approval. The Hindu Cultural Center has been in existence in the southern Fairfield County area since 2003, and it purchased this property in 2011 from the Unitarian Church, which had previously operated a religious facility at this location. My client has been using the existing Unitarian Church building for its religious and cultural programs since acquiring Kittle.
I'm sorry. I really apologize, Mr. Knott. There's a question that came forward. On the certificates of mailing, there's a question about one of the applicants did not receive a certificate of mailing for 190 Chapel. Can you check that to see if you have sent that?
I'm sorry? Say that again?
Certificate of mailings.
Yeah.
One of the abutting properties felt that they did not receive a certificate of mailing for 190 Chapel. Can you check that?
His last name would be Sheehy Residence, S-H-E-E-H-Y. They were in attendance at the hearing tonight, but left before... During recess. Oh, wait. No, they're actually right here, Mr. and Mrs. Sheehy.
I do not have... I do not have one for 190 Chapel Street. However, I believe you can confirm with Mr. Florick that the abutting property owner having actual notice of the meeting is sufficient to get over the problem of lack of written notice.
That is correct. Notice is waived for anybody who's actually in attendance.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the interruption.
Sorry about this. But I'm glad you're here. In any event. So my client has been using the existing church building for its religious and cultural programs since purchasing the property in 2011. And with me here this evening to answer questions, if necessary, are Mrs. Zerenu Vich, President of the Hindu Cultural Center, to my left, her husband, Mr. Jitender Vich, and Dr. Pramila Nathan, a member of the Hindu Cultural Center Board of Directors. Also, Mr. Artie Lew, civil engineer from Atlantic Consulting and Engineering, who designed the drainage plan, soil erosion, sediment control plan with supporting details, who will explain the center's proposal to you from a design and engineering perspective. But before I introduce Mr. Lew, I'd like to explain a little bit about what the purpose of the new facility will be. Hindu temples are not only sacred places, but also places of secular activity, a meeting place where members can gather for lectures, practice yoga, meditation, spiritual discourses, and sing divine songs. The new building proposed by the Hindu Cultural Center will incorporate a sacred temple, the design of which has to follow certain geometrical criteria relating to the placement of deities and the gathering of universal cosmic energy. The temple must consist of an inner sanctum where deities are placed, the primary of which must face in an easterly direction. The new building is being proposed to be used solely for religious purposes, whereas the existing facility will continue to be used for all cultural activities. Prior to embarking on this current proposal, my client considered reconfiguring the current worship hall, which had been designed based on the Unitarian Church principles, and they explored various options along those lines, using the existing building. Unfortunately, the current worship hall does not lend itself to accommodate all Hindu geometrical design principles and still leave room for religious practices to take place without undergoing a massive expansion of that facility with its consequential interruption of the current operation. Hence, the proposal before you tonight was explored as the solution to this problem, and it was determined that this proposal satisfies the geometrical design requirements for a Hindu religious facility while still leaving the previous Unitarian Church building available to continue all cultural activities. Now, the existing former Unitarian Church building is 9,464 square feet in size, and the newly proposed temple will be 7,164 square feet, for a total building area on site of 16,628 square feet. This is on a 3.598 acre site, 156,728 square feet in size. Parking is provided for 101 cars, where 84 are actually required under the zoning regulations. So we have 17 more parking spaces than are required under the zoning regulations. In addition to special case approval, my client sought and has already received approval for this proposal from the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission on February 15, 2017. Now, at this time, I'd like to reference the administrative comments. The police department, the fire department, the building department, the engineering department, the public works department, and the economic development department all had no comment. The health director wants to see test holes and percolation testing done before her office will approve in addition to the septic system, and obviously, this will be done to Maureen Whelan's satisfaction prior, obviously, to the expansion of the septic system. Now, I'd like to reference Exhibit Three, which is a copy of Jay's administrative comments. And I've highlighted in yellow certain comments made by Jay that I want to bring to your attention. The approved use and proposed development is permitted subject to special case in an RS1 zone and is consistent with the context of the neighborhood. On February 15, the wetlands commission approved the proposed development. The development meets all setback and height requirements. However, as presented, the proposed plan does not meet the landscaping requirements for the parking area as defined in Section 12.12.1 regarding landscaping and planting islands for shade trees. Appropriately selected shade trees should be designed into the parking lot as required by the zoning regulations. To promote better stormwater infiltration and reduce stress on the town's stormwater system, the commission may choose to consider requiring as a condition of approval that all additional parking spaces over the requirement be made permeable. In other words, the 17 extra parking spaces that we have be made permeable. Now, I want to make reference to Exhibit Four, which is a revised site plan. This site plan is being submitted by my client to address the issues regarding parking lot landscaping raised by Jay in his administrative comments. We have incorporated all of the required landscaping required by Section 12.12.1 in this exhibit. And I want to make reference to Exhibit Five, which is information sheet regarding true grid permeable pavers. This exhibit is being provided pursuant to Jay's suggestion that all additional parking spaces over the number of spaces required be made permeable. As I indicated, our site plan shows 101 parking spaces with only 84 required. Therefore, 17 spaces could be made permeable if you agree with Jay's suggestion, and my client is agreeable to this if you wish to impose this as a stipulation. Now, at this time, I want to introduce Mr. Artie Lew, a civil engineer from Atlantic Consulting and Engineering, who will explain the engineering, hydrology, and architectural components of the revised plan. Artie?
Good evening. Artie Lew from Atlantic Consulting and Engineering. To do a brief background of this one, the new impervious area for this project will be the proposed building and the walks around it. Now, all the impervious, additional impervious surface, the water runoff from this one are directed to our proposed rain guard on the northern side of the property with an overflow, a level spreader near the brook. Now, the existing asphalt or the existing parking area of the site, which is... Will remain as is. All additional area for the proposed additional parking will be composed of the true grass pavers, which will be... Now, there's no increase in impervious area for the parking site, because we're using the true grass pavers for that one. And for the proposed building, the impervious water created by that is handled by the rain garden. Thank you.
This time, I want to address the special case criteria and objectives that are set forth in Section 20.2.1, which are the considerations that you are to look to in deciding whether to approve a special case application. First is that the proposed use shall be conformance with all requirements of the district in which it is located. As indicated in Jay's comments, this proposal does satisfy all of the zoning regulations, and it is a permitted use in a residential zone. The location, size, and intensity of the use shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development. Once again, we're talking about a 15, 16,000 square foot building on a 150,000 square foot lot. Obviously, not too intense a use. The proposed use shall be in conformance with the town plan of development. The town plan of development contemplates residential zones being used for church purposes as permitted uses. Therefore, we are in compliance with the comprehensive plan of development. The design location and specific details should not adversely affect safety in the street nor increase traffic congestion in the area nor interfere with the pattern of highway circulation. Obviously, we have 84 required parking spaces. The amount of traffic that's going to be generated by this facility is not going to change from what that which is being generated now. There are not going to be additional worshippers coming to this site. The Hindu community is of a relatively fixed total in Fairfield County. The only difference between the use of this site as approved, if approved by you, and the use now, is that the building that is being designed, for which we are seeking approval, is going to comply with Hindu design criteria specifications, where the current one doesn't. The amount of people going there for services is going to be exactly the same as it is now. So that's not going to be a problem. The emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration shall not adversely affect land, water, or air quality. Obviously, there will be none of that. And the proposed use shall not adversely affect tax valuation of neighboring properties. From the street, you're not even going to see this building from the street. It's tucked behind the existing A-frame building, if you look at the site plan. And finally, the proposed use shall not create any fire or police hazards. As I indicated in my administrative comment section, neither the police department nor the fire department had any adverse comments with respect to this application. So it's a good proposal. It's a very uniquely designed building, and I would request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna open this up to questions.
I'm going to open this up to questions to the commissioners. Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Attorney Knott. Just some very basic questions. First, would the hours of operation change from what it is now, barring special events, of course?
Come up, please. This is Mrs. Veeg. She's the
Hello.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't get your question.
The hours of operation.
No, no. Our temple opens at, from nine to eleven in the morning, and then five to eight in the evening. And then Saturdays and Sundays, it's open all day, Monday through Friday. Those are our
Okay. Oh, thank you. So there's really no significant change in people who would visit the temple, congregate at the temple, or the general hours of operation, barring special holidays and special events?
No, no change. Special holidays, we do occasionally, but we never go beyond nine o'clock.
Okay. Oh, thank you very much. That's pretty much the crux of the zoning matters I had. I imagine, Attorney Knott, maybe you could answer us just from your years of experience dealing with multiple planning and zoning boards. The only major change is the aesthetic structure of the outside to be in compliance with Hindu spiritual and cultural tradition as opposed to Unitarian or Western traditions.
Exactly.
So is it even fair to say that zoning could even, like, regulate that? Wouldn't that be violating some sort of free speech?
No, 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 no. You can regulate it. Under our zoning regulations, religious institutions are allowed in a residential zone subject to special case approval. Special case approval is Stratford's way of saying site plan approval. So religious or not, this board has got the jurisdiction and authority to approve or deny site plans relating to religious
I don't think that was the question I was really trying to go for. The major difference is that the building itself, the aesthetics of the building, is going to look and be in compliance to more of the Hindu tradition as opposed to a Unitarian or Western tradition.
That's true.
So it'd be, is it fair to think that we really can't regulate that? It's still religious use or religious ground, something that was previously religious use, whether it's Lutheran or Hindu or Unitarian?
No, the aesthetics, the aesthetics of religious institutions, you're really not supposed to get into.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm going at, as a First Amendment, free speech, separation of religion issues.
By the way, the lady who was just speaking was Mrs. Renaud Veeg. She's the president of the Hindu Cultural Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Giuliano?
Okay, Attorney Knott. It's definitely, it's definitely, you said in the restrictions for the height, so what would that be?
Thirty feet in a
Thirty feet. So the top of the trident is going to be less than thirty feet?
It's not the top. It's the
Top of the dome?
Midpoint of the roof.
I'm sorry?
Midpoint.
Yeah, the way, the way building height is defined in the Stratford zoning regulations is the midpoint between the peak and the bottom of the
It'll be the midpoint of the dome. So anything above that, because there's quite a few above that, and then you go to the trident, so we're going to be up there. But it don't matter.
As long as it's thirty feet to the midpoint of the roof, it meets the zoning regulations.
Right.
All right. And then it's going to be, so then it's going to be up on that hill there, because that's a little bit of a hill that that's going in over there. It's not really going to be behind the other temple.
It's going to be between the other church and the house that's behind the other church.
Yes, it's going to be
On the left-hand side of the property.
Well, according to your drawing, it's going to be sticking more forward of the behind of the temple, is all I'm trying to get. It's right there.
Yeah.
Are you looking at visibility?
Right. The road is here. The existing, the existing church is here.
Yep. So it's a little bit more forward of it, is what I'm getting at. It's not behind it or anything. It's almost in forward behind it. See where it says temple right here, the older one, the A-frame?
Yeah, right.
So then this new temple's in front of it.
But, no.
It's behind it, but more forward, is what I'm saying. So it's behind it, and it's in that hill. There's a hill there, so it's going to be built into that hill, more or less. So that's where we're going to really have some, still, you fall under the height issue, but it's still going to be up there. When you come down that road, you're going to be looking at quite a beautiful thing. That's all I'm trying to get at here, even though you're right about the midpoint, but you're going to be looking at something that you're not going to believe. It's going to be out there. It's up there. Trust me, I was there.
Well, it's going to be, it's on the side of the property that's immediately adjacent to the Grace Evangelical Lutheran Church. They measure the height of the building by the average elevation around the perimeter of the building. So if the elevation around the perimeter of the building is that, if there are different elevations around the perimeter of the base of the building, they measure the height of the building, building height, from the average of that average elevation.
If I was to restate, I think what Mr. Giuliano was saying, it's not that he's disputing your measurements. It was more the statement that it will be more visible than what you're alluding to, that you can see it more clearly as you're coming down the street.
I never said it wasn't going to be visible. He asked me what the height was. I said thirty feet. But I, I, I'm not in a position to know whether thirty feet is going to make it visible or not.
No, you're correct. I misstated myself, but I'm not backing down on the issue that it's behind the old temple or the old church, that's the A-frame, but more forward towards the Lutheran.
That's right.
And if you go look at that property, that's a slight hill of about ten feet high that it's going on. So by the time you put that there, whatever, if they're digging in the hill, whatever you want to call it, okay, you're going to, when you come down Chapel Street, you're going to see this. It's going to be, I mean, it's going to be, it's a beautiful building. I mean, you can't beat their architect. It's gorgeous. I'm just saying that. It's up there. Even though you're to thirty feet with the regs, you're there.
You just answered your question.
Yeah.
Well, in the regs.
Well, when the people come up to talk
Okay. Are we good?
My subject. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Peppin?
I just have one question. So you will address Jay Habansky's trees in the parking lot?
The site plan that I submitted tonight, Exhibit Four, addresses that issue.
Can we just take, give Mr. Habansky, picking, dovetailing off of Ms. Peppin's point. Mr. Habansky, can you give us your thoughts on the site plan?
The revised site plan, which was submitted to our file a few days ago, I reviewed it. It satisfies all my, all my suggestions and my staff comments.
There you go. Oh, good. Mr. Rukuskas?
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't really have any additional questions. Everything was answered. Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Kina Madsen, three-one-five Fox Hill Road. I'm asking this question for a woman who was here earlier, and she just, she couldn't stay any longer, she had to go home to her dogs. And I'm not really sure of her name. I know she lives on East Broadway, but she walks her dogs up in that area, Roosevelt and the whole area. She also goes to the Lutheran church. So it's more of a question. It's not an opposition. She just wants to make sure, I guess, there's, and I know this church, I used to dance there, there's like, there's a piece of, like, grass that's between the two churches, and she knows that the structure that's going in is considerably larger than what is there now. Like, I guess it's going to be higher and taller. And her concern is that it will get wider and that that, that piece of grass or whatever that's separating, that the easement will change. So if you could answer that question, because she's going to email me tomorrow, and I can give her that answer, I can send her your way. I, it sounded like she meant, like, is the easement going to change? Is the building, because it's getting bigger, is it going to get closer to the other church and kind of take up that middle area? Does that make sense?
We'll try. When, when, after we finish this
Yeah, that makes sense. If you go there and look at the property, you could see that it was staked out already, so on and so forth, and you could picture this thing there. That's all I was getting at.
We'll give Mr. Knott a chance to answer for her in a minute. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody who would like to speak against this application?
My name is Jay Sheehy. I reside at one-ninety Chapel Street. I'm not necessarily against the application, but I would like to make a couple of comments regarding the location to Mr. Giuliano's point. That church building, and I know thirty feet is to the midpoint, but I would believe that the peak, the very top section of that structure, is going to be significantly higher, and it is completely exposed because of where it's located. It's, the property line is actually the edge of Grace Lutheran's parking lot, and it's about forty feet from the edge of that parking lot at an angle due to its, the religious requirements that faces due east. So it's literally going to, it's quite a structure. It looks, it's very sort of exotic-looking, it's very, but it's going to stick out and be very, very prominent in that particular location. So I don't know about what the total aggregate height will be. I know what you had mentioned about the thirty feet at the midpoint. I would bet, again, that the structure itself will be much, much higher than that, and I just have some concerns about that being just, just a very large structure in that particular location at that site. So that's just something I would ask you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to speak to it? One way or the other?
Good evening. My name is Timothy Clow. I'm speaking on behalf of Ronald and Evelyn Clow, forty Chapel Street. Do, I just want to open by, I welcome you as neighbors. We haven't formally met since I just moved back to town after being away for some time. I am also not against this. I have my own concerns and am here to, again, voice my parents' concerns, one of which, and Mr. Knott, just for record, since my parents are not here, I do not believe that we got noticed either. They've been giving me mail. You were very polite to ask what my concerns were, but with my parents' condition, it's hard to formalize those, so I waited until I learned more. I also learned tonight that you are planning a partition wall along our property, and again, I am in the dark, but someone had mentioned a possible wall along the property. Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm not really against
Mr. Clow?
Both sides of the
Mr. Clow, we're just having a little trouble hearing you.
I apologize. So my question was if there was going to be a partition wall between my property, my dad's property, and theirs. So that being said, that they're saying no. My concerns are watershed largely. Although there is the rain garden planned, two things that I noticed when I brought the young lady from Water Conservation to the property and looked down, there is already, shall we say, sliding going on into Framan Brook at the back of the property.
Erosion?
Yes. Now, we both conferred that this could have been a heavy downpour or hurricane. When they built the Universalist Church, they used the large fill in rock to put over that ledge to hold it back. Being with that, you have water that pours down the face of that rock, and underneath is being washed, and I can see that with what is coming down into the creek where we used to have a nice little trout pond, and that is filled in. But there was actually a slide, it's visible if you go look, of large rocks going into this creek, and I'm worried about that being occluded altogether. So that being said, also in their parking lot, I am downhill from them. It's a significant hill. In building our property, the house that my folks are in now, we had to blast substantially. So I happen to know, other than the debris that has decomposed in the trees and things, not far underground, it is bedrock. There is no question about it. In fact, we couldn't even finish the wall because the rock is down there. I am a little worried about the pitch of the water So water erosion is my other issue now. I guess with that, I have a couple of pictures, and I'm going to bring these to you. I'm not trying to throw this on you, but I got these yesterday. May I? Just a first
I, I think he's bringing them to you. Just submit them.
So as this grows, as this gets more popular, I can understand the use is going to go. As it stands, being the use that we see now, this is my property, just down from their garbage. I've got debris coming into my yard quite often. I've picked it up a number of times, but within a week, it's there. There's aggregate that has been dug up on my end of the property, and when somebody was doing some tree cutting, everything was more or less cut and then put on so I just ask for the respect of the property line being protected, and, you know, with tree used, if garbage the rain garden is one of my biggest issues. I would like to make sure that there's enough of a capacity with the extra root space and
I think we got it, in spite of the crackling. Anybody else who would like to speak? One way or the other?
I can hardly, I don't know what to do. Do me a favor. Try moving your, just move it around a lot. Maybe something's loose in there. Yeah?
Okay, can you hear me? Well, now I've got the right church and the right pew. I'm here for the right petition. My name is Diane Hinz, and I reside at two-oh-two P Street in District Four. I am a member of Grace Lutheran Church at one-fifty Chapel Street. Again, as Mr. Sheehy said, I am not here, I guess, to say pro for this petition or con for this petition. I just have a couple of comments. With the microphones as they are, I want to ask, I'm sure you guys all have this map. This is the first site map in there. Excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous. I don't usually speak in front of people. As they say, the temple, where I see where it's going to be, and I beg to differ with them, I think it's going to be able to be seen from the street. There are not a lot of trees, and if the trees are there, they're in rather poor shape from Chapel Street into the building, so you will be able to see it and that. Although it is a very attractive-looking building, so I don't have a problem with that. What I do question, and I did mention to Mr. Habansky when I was in the planning and zoning, is the distance from the edge of the temple, I guess, to our parking lot. It's thirty-seven-point-seven feet. And as Mr. Habansky, I did walk the property several times, and I know you said you walked the property, I think, a couple of times, and it is a rather steep incline. As you come down, as I stand at our property and look at the stakes and look down at the existing building, which is now their temple, it's a very steep incline. So now, if you shorten that distance up to our property, it's going to be a rather steep incline, which, I mean, not that we have, we do have a childcare facility in our grounds, and we are state and city-regulated and all-approved and everything, and we do have the required play areas. However, when mom or dad comes out to get into the parking lot, which is on this area, and little, you know, Becky Sue goes running to the side, I don't want her to run off of our property and run onto the ground, and we do have deers come through there and go after a deer or whatever, a turkey, whatever it is, and go down this incline. So getting back to this incline and the short distance, I think it would be wise to have some some kind of fence put up along that line, and/or a brick wall, some kind of retaining wall, because I'm assuming the temple is going to be down lower on the same plane as the existing building. So that's my concern, is that it's such a short distance from our driveway to the edge, that's gonna be a steep incline, and I think I'd like that addressed in their plans.
A fence.
Okay. And I think that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who, excuse me, is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against, or just state an opinion? If not, Mr. Na, would you like to comment?
First of all, with respect to the height issue, we did not ask for any height variances. The building height will be limited to thirty feet. Wherever it comes out, it's gonna be thirty feet. We're, we're not asking for anything higher than thirty feet. Far as notice to Mrs. Clow, I did send a letter to her on March ninth, two thousand seventeen. Ms. Evelyn Mae Clow, Forty Chapel Street. Okay? That's one of the certificates. So that's it. Thank you.
Miss, before you leave, just a couple of questions that I, I have, and I'll see if anybody else wants to follow up. Would the applicant consider putting in a fence, a protective fence, along the border as suggested by one of the?
They are shaking their heads yes.
Okay.
In unison.
In patriots.
But I think, I think that we ought to be getting it from somebody at Grace Lutheran other than one of the members of the congregation, no disrespect meant to her, but I'm not so sure that whoever runs that church next door wants a fence. I mean, I think we should check with them, but if they want a fence, they'll put up a fence.
I believe, knowing the membership, I believe she does represent the general opinion of the church, and certainly you can talk to the, your neighbors to find out, but I, I believe it. The other thing that came forward was the rain garden and some of the rock erosion and, and sliding.
I, I meant to address the, I meant to address Mr. Clow's erosion issue. That was an issue that was brought up by Bill McCann at the Wetlands Commission meeting, and we went to two consecutive monthly meetings at Wetlands, once in January, once in February. He raised the issue at the January meeting. We addressed it by the installation of the rain garden, which was not on our original plan. You can see now there's a substantial rain garden between the back of our parking lot and the brook. So that whole issue that was raised by Mr. Clow had previously been raised by Bill McCann at the Wetlands Commission. He asked us for the rain garden in order to mitigate any erosion issues, and we provided him with the plan that they ultimately approved, and that rain garden is shown on the plan, which is before you tonight, Exhibit Four. Thank you.
Okay. Don't go. There was another question that came forward about, I'm trying to repeat this properly. There is a, with the addition of the building, there is gonna be less space between the Hindu church, Hindu temple, sorry, and Grace Lutheran, and I guess there was a concern that there would be less green space and maintenance, and am I saying that correctly? That they wanted to make sure that there was gonna be proper vegetation, or at least vegetation maintained between the two properties.
Well, we're not showing anything other than vegetation on the eastern side of our site next to the newly proposed temple. We're, we're showing that as to be all landscaped area. The problem is that their parking lot comes right up to the property line between our property and their property. So the lack of vegetation is not gonna be on our site, it's on, it's on the Grace Lutheran site, because you can see from the site plan that their parking lot comes right up to the property line, but we've got all vegetation in between our building and the property.
The last question that I had, and I don't know the answer. The comments that I summarized was, is that the building is beautiful, it will be a tall building, there's a sphere, what do you call it on top, the?
Triad.
Triad? Is that what it's, I didn't know the proper, the triad that's on top of it. Is there any way to provide more visual shielding, shielding with trees or such that would help mitigate that a bit from the?
I, I don't know.
Mr. Giuliano, you're welcome to jump in here and help me out if you'd like.
I can address that. We haven't put any landscaping plans, so we can always put trees, but if you are concerned about the structure itself, the structure comes in various sizes, and we can always reduce the size of the structure if that is a concern. We do like those structures on our temples because those are significant for us, but the size of it does, can be varied, and it is not a big issue. We can, we can kind of have our architect configure it, which is a little less height, but we do meet the zoning requirements, so we can look into it to see that, just to aesthetically make it better for everyone around, that it can be lowered.
Thank you. I, I think that's, from, if I'm summarizing this properly, I think the, your, your neighbors and those that have spoken would appreciate every effort that you make to make the structure as, as small as you could be. Okay? Any other questions?
Yeah, a, a comment. What if this was a Christian church? Let's be real here. We're, we're big steeple. Would people have a different opinion?
I don't think that that was really the point of this. I think the same comments would appear.
It's in regulations. It's in regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who, any questions? If not, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close ninety-six Chapel Street.
I'll second.
Mr. Giuliano, Mr., Ms. Peppin, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes unanimously. Thank you very much, and that closes the public hearing. We will take a two-minute recess and then prepare for the administrative session. We begin. Folks, folks, I appreciate, we're having a little trouble hearing up here. Thank you. Okay. The first is the approval of minutes on, from February twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen. I'm assuming everybody had a chance to read it. Is there a motion to approve?
Point of order, Madam Chair, shouldn't we be focused on the petitions first?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. I do have to go to the petitions. I came back to it.
Unless you want the minutes out of order.
No, no, no. I just went to, I had that page open and went to it first. Okay, the very, oh.
Yes, three eighty-two Ferry Boulevard.
I'm gonna take, yeah, I am gonna take a couple out of order.
Uh-oh.
Um, let's go in the order that we had listened to them. All right, twenty-nine Thompson is not, has been delayed.
Wood End Road. Wood End Road.
Wood End Road. So can we have a motion to take Wood End Road off the table? By Mr. Giuliano, second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. This is the, from Maya Carabera for the liquor location.
All right. I don't have a problem with it. I think they took care of the storage for the little bit that they needed there.
Mm-hmm. I, I know this facility, it's in the area that I go to and frequent. It, it's a welcome change. There are no complaints. People are actually asking for it because of the fact that culturally you have a glass of wine or a beer with a meal, and it's not a bar.
And this, these are usually the most benign liquor permits.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
By Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Giuliano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, then we went on to Chapel, I think, right?
No. Three ninety-six Nichols Avenue.
Let me go back.
Nichols, Nichols Avenue.
Yeah, Nichols. There it is.
Motion to take three ninety-six Nichols Avenue off the table.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Comment? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I, I think it's a welcome addition to Nichols School. It's, it's a very danger, Nichols Ave itself is very dangerous. I do concur that I think it would be good just to have one way around, just to have it one loop as opposed to the single, so I'd stipulate that. Encourage any sort of signage on Nichols Ave to discourage parking on that as well, in addition to what they're seeking.
I can agree with that. I have a couple, but Mr. Giuliano, you wanna add?
Yeah, the way in and out, the only way that has the two in and outs, you wanna get rid of the one-way in. Is that what?
Make the whole circle one-way.
All right, so now you go in, and then you're gonna have to go into the bypass lane and go out and pass everybody.
Yes, but the whole circle will be one-way.
You know, it gets a little hectic over there. Your children don't wanna get out of the car right away, so, I don't know, is that the good, what if you wanna get in there and get into that other parking lot?
You still gotta go all the way around.
Go all the way around. You can't, now, we're getting, we're taking away the other entrance to get into that. If you were just a teacher and wanted to get in there, now we're taking.
Well, they're already there, probably.
Okay.
Don't you think? Before the kids get there, they're already there.
They usually are. It's the safest if, with a one-directional, and you get people into that habit.
All right, and we're gonna keep the buffer around the house.
Buffer around the house.
And your sidewalk.
Well, that's what I want, but, Ms. Peppin?
Yeah. I second.
Okay. Mr. Ruskus?
I have nothing further than that.
Okay, I'd like to, to make a recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Well, before you finish, I wanna put a stipulation in there, that they make every attempt to widen and first, repair the sidewalks. The town should be responsible to repair those sidewalks. Number two, they should provide an ad alternate opportunity to widen the sidewalks as well on North Avenue.
In the town right of way.
In the town right of way. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve thirty ninety-six Nichols Avenue.
And one last thing, did you also mention signages to not block the driveway?
Yeah.
Got that?
And no parking. No parking.
And no parking.
No parking where? Sign, well, signage is.
Well, don't block the, yeah, don't block the driveways. Do we want no parking on one side of North Avenue, or leave it to traffic?
I think there's no parking signs currently there already, but it's whether they're enforced.
Would that be Nichols Avenue?
That's by the daycare.
That's on Nichols?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
We're talking about North Avenue.
Yeah. The signage would be on North Avenue now.
Definitely we want, don't block the park, do not block the driveway, and they should check with traffic to see if no parking signs are needed.
I think also we were requesting that they check with the DOT, State Department of Transportation, to see if, if that traffic light is appropriate with its signals.
Yeah, if they could, to have the, have the police check the, see if they could optimize the traffic lighting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve of all stipulations mentioned for three ninety-six Nichols Ave.
By Mr. Fuller, second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is the tax amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And make a motion to take the tax amendment off the table?
So moved.
By Mr. Fuller.
I'll second.
Ms. Peppin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Motion to deny.
Here's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Giuliano. Discussion?
Yes. The reason why I'm against this is this is legislation as opposed to a site plan, so we control the rules. We set the rules by doing this. I have a profound disagreement that this is in compliance with the P O C D, because it's just generally not good idea to change commercial residential unless it's adaptive reuse. I have tremendous concerns about traffic. I think the traffic argument is bunk. If this guy lived in Strathford, he knows people would go to Route Eight to get to I-95 there, not drive all the way through the center of town. Three, I feel burned by the T O D. I felt lied to as a zoning commissioner, and here's another chance, something even more monstrous than the T O D. I deny.
Okay. Mr. Giuliano, any comment?
Um, I deny it too without prejudice, and I won't say anymore. I think Mr. Fuller, Commissioner Fuller, Fuller took it away on that.
Ms. Peppin?
I, I, I just think that it, there's lots of controversy here, and I think we should look widely on that, and I'm gonna go with denial.
Okay. Mr. Ruskus?
Well, we have one office park development in town, and this proposal would make it so that half of that could be residential, which just doesn't make any sense to me, so I would vote to deny.
Okay. My comments are more simpler. I agree with part of what Mr. Fuller says, but I have more of a concern around the traffic. I do think that we need to have a responsibility to address the traffic issues before increasing the amount of traffic even more so, although I recognize that the development right now as it stands could move forward within the regulation. I'd also have some concerns about the density, although the plan was not submitted and is not expected to be submitted, I would be concerned about the number of buildings that are there and the amount of density. A lesser density building would be more advisable, in, in my opinion. The residential piece, although I recognize that it is a particular dislike or it's not in favor of the neighborhood, I recognize that, but I also recognize the fact that, as mentioned by Mr. Flor, eight thirty G, affordable housing, doesn't care whether or not there's residents there living, there now or later. But I am in agreeance that at this point, I'm not gonna add residential until we have addressed some of the other issues that plague the property. I am concerned about the environmental impact. I don't think we've seen enough to go forward yet on adding more buildings until we see a, a little bit more information about that. So with that, I think there is enough information to put forward, to call the vote. All in, all in favor of the motion to deny? Say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously to deny this application. Thank you very much. Next application, nine ninety-three Holy, Honey Spot has been, uh, continued. The next one is ninety-six Chapel Street, the Hindu Cultural Center. Is there a motion to take that off the table? By Ms. Peppin? By Mr. Ruskus, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Is there a motion?
Before a motion, I, I think it'd be good to stipulate if this does go to approval, to insert tree, a good solid tree line like we've done with previous applications.
Put a motion, put a motion forward.
A motion to approve of the following stipulations.
Thank you for the motion.
A solid tree line of that.
Sorry, hold on. Motion to approve, second by Mr. Giuliano.
Still making the motion with the following stipulations.
Well, you can make the stipulations now in, in your commentary.
How does he know if he wants to second those stipulations?
Got a point.
We can do it either way, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the, what is this, ninety-six Chapel Street petition with the following stipulations, that a tree line no less than at least twelve to fifteen feet, we've, we used that in previous applications to approve, that fencing is put around the, the sensitive areas, that the, the height requirement to the midpoint not to exceed thirty feet as per our regulations, but I'd also stipulate that we can't over-regulate any spires or steeples or, or minulets or anything that's in proper keep into the Hindu tradition. Don't know if that's the appropriate, the cultural term for them or not, but we can't regulate how it looks because I think that would violate the First Amendment issue, but we can. can regulate the land use and, and how it impacts its neighborhood, so I'll make that motion with, with those particular stipulations.
Just to clarify, the, the tree line, the tree line buffer, twelve to fifteen feet, and that's in between the neighboring property that's, the, what is it, Lutheran Church?
Yes.
Okay.
Not, not on the other, not the other side with, with the clouds?
No, that's way, no.
And you want a full, a full tree line?
And no fence.
Or, or just in the front? Yeah, we're getting to the fencing, see, now we're gonna have to do a number of friendly amendments, that's why I was gonna ask you to hold on your comments, so we didn't have to do so many friendly amendments. So, moving forward, do you want to?
Well, I think there should be fencing where there's gaps, trees don't cover everything.
Can you, we've got a motion, do you want to second that motion, or do you want to, does anybody want to second that motion, or do we want to restate the motion?
I already seconded it, and if-
Seconded by Mr. Giuliano, okay, now we're into, into discussion.
I think there's still needs, like the lady said, that there still needs to be some type of a small fence there, so nobody runs across, because they are kind of close over there, okay, and plus maybe with some of the trees like Commissioner Fuller said, okay, I mean, this is without prejudice, I'm not going there, it's a beautiful building, it's peaceful area, peaceful at the whole end of that, so that would be the stipulation to make.
Now we have to-
Fencing with, somewhere at the tree line?
Just around the perimeter line with fence.
Tree line with fence?
Oh, you have tree lines and you have fences on other properties, I don't know why this is so complicated. I know it's midnight, but seriously, it's common sense, trees don't cover everything.
So that's what we're saying?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're saying.
No, but do you want to say tree with fence line?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what-
You said tree line originally, so that we added the fence.
With fencing.
Our assurance.
Um, Mr. Fuller, do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I accept it, I don't even think it's an amendment, because it was always stipulated.
You know, you, you made a motion, so now everything else that we do is gonna have to be a friendly amendment, that's, and there's several others.
Yes, I accept it.
Is there a second by Mr. Giuliano?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we move on to the next. Ms. Peppin, do you have anything? Did you, okay, Mr. Raguskas?
No, I, I just agree that we don't need to tell them to make any of the spires or any of the decorative things smaller, I think that they should do what they presented in the plans.
Okay. I do have a couple things, I disagree with one point, the fencing I agree with, the trees, I don't think they need a tree line, I think that's excessive, and was not brought forward. If they, they met the landscaping requirements, if they added a tree with the agreement of, where they needed to be in the front, I would be fine with that, but I think it is a bit excessive to put a row of trees in place, in addition to the fencing, and because of the landscaping, I'm not even sure how you can put all those trees in there without causing more erosion, because now you're disturbing that landscape.
What trees?
So I'm not so sure that that's even possible, I would request that we change that wording so that trees, if it is reasonably, we could do-
Are we bringing about a definition of a tree perimeter?
No, because the, one of the concerns that I have is when I looked at that property, when you add that sized tree, you can destroy the lands, that whole side-
Some sort of aesthetic tree thing, I, a friendly amendment to put some sort of tree aesthetics in there.
Well-
Trees with fencing were reasonable.
Whatever makes it look nice.
That's better than, well, you said twenty-foot trees before.
I didn't say twenty-foot trees.
Yes, you did.
Twelve to fifteen foot.
Okay, so trees, aesthetic, greenery trees.
Were reasonable.
Reasonable trees, okay. That makes it, that's a difference than a large tree.
I accept the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Okay, have we said, Gail, you got everything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, thank you very much. Thanks for your help. Okay, I think we covered all the applications, right? Now we can move into the other work?
Let's deal with this, three-eight-two, ferry board off the table.
I second.
Three-eight-two, as part of our other work. There's a motion by Mr. Fuller to take three-eight-two off third, second by Ms. Peppin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. More trees?
You never have enough trees.
Discuss, this is where we're at, um, does anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny by Mr. Fuller, does anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Giuliano. Okay, discussion.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, um, T O D seems to get bigger, to be getting bigger and bigger, and we're still trying to wrestle as a town how to adequately fit a overlay district. First one was forty-something, at the Christ Episcopal Church parking lot, the next one was the Salty Project, seventy to eighty, this one's double that. It's important when we have young policy to set standards, and the special case provisions in the T O D regulations provides us guidance on that. This is not in harmony with the neighborhood, this is not the transit-oriented district, across the street is the, is the periphery of it, but this is the Husatonic neighborhood, not the T O D.
Excuse me, just, just, no comments, please?
Unless you want to run for office, please, by all means. Because of that, this is not good T O D, there is no attempt to have reasonable mixed use, the presenting attorney even said, why would we have mixed use, mixed use doesn't make any sense, well, you just killed the very reason why people wanted T O D in the first place, so with that, I cannot support this application.
Um, there's a couple of things I just want to, are you stating that this particular location is not in the T O D district?
It's-
Is that what you're-
It's in the Husatonic neighborhood, and when we look at special case provisions, we have to look in harmony of the neighborhood, yes, it touches the T O D, so therefore is eligible for T O D petitions, but when we look at special case, which is the overriding measure we have to take, in looking at T O D?
Excuse me, if there's any more comments, we're gonna ask you to leave. This is-
Sorry, step away.
So, when we look in that special case, that's what we use to judge whether this, this already petition is appropriate to that neighborhood, we have to look at the immediate neighborhood, which is the Husatonic neighborhood, this is not in, in good measure of that, the front side is, not the back side.
Okay. Mr. Giuliano?
I haven't, it, it's just very intense in the front, and a little bit in the back too, I, I just can't see all of that in that one place, I think it needs to be toned down, maybe they could regroup, go back to the neighbors, maybe they can come up with some other style, I mean, this T O D is really getting to be a situation for us, I mean, I'd like to go out on the limb here and say, you know what, Hamilton come out really nice, I'd like to see something like that there instead, with, with buildings like that there, I know it cuts down, but I think that would sell, be a quicker sell, but all this intensity on that neighborhood is just something I can't swallow right at this minute.
Okay, Ms. Peppin?
Um, I think the petitioner came back and tried to adjust to the neighborhood, he did, he did say that he was gonna leave some stores underneath for T O D.
Are you asking for more clarification from the petitioner to explain that?
Well, he, he said he would leave it open.
I'm asking you, are you asking the way the rules to ask the question of the petitioner, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I don't think that would be acceptable, the public hearing is closed, you should not entertain any new evidence whatsoever.
Okay, thank you very much.
But, but he, I, you know, as far as Dave said that, he wasn't gonna do any retail, but I think he was gonna leave.
There was one space that was-
One space.
We want to-
It was two spaces.
Two, I thought it was-
It was two spaces.
Was also contradicted by the presenting attorney, saying, why would we have special ki, I mean, mixed use, it's not in our economic interest.
That's not what I heard, but, okay, but let's finish, Mr. Raguskas, are you finished, Ms. Peppin, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I am.
Um, I mean, I do give credit to the developer for toning down the development a little bit, and mentioned the attempt to have two units of retail, but indicated that they didn't think that they would be able to rent them because our taxes are too high and they would end up being residential units. I, I look here in the zoning regulations, and it says, the location size and intensity of such use shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development. These three buildings, it's too many buildings and it's too big, I stood there and looked and tried to picture it, and it changes the neighborhood, and I, I just can't support that.
Okay, uh, my comments are that, and they're gonna be similar, I think the applicant has done a lot of work to adjust his building from the original concept to what he presented it to us, in terms of reducing the number of floors adding commercial properties, I will add, he did specifically, and I made notes of that, there was mixed use in it, I also noted that he had reduced a number of the floors, I thought that was a vast improvement, and I will compliment both the applicant and the public for working together to try to come forward with a much better plan that fits the needs. I do think that there is room for more improvement, I think there's an opportunity that the applicant can work with the neighborhood to look at a plan that may be more fitting, I recognize the fact that that is going to be a, some kind of development, there is going to be something there. I do hope that the applicant and the neighborhood work a little more closely together to kind of find something that is much more reasonable, I think there's some good plans out there, and I encourage the applicant to do so. I'd prefer to deny without prejudice, but at this point, I will agree with my other councilor members for unanimous decision, in hopes that this will only enable the neighborhood to come back with a good plan that we can all agree with.
Madam Chair, all, all accept a friendly amendment to deny without prejudice.
Thank you. Um, is that a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second. The motion is to deny without prejudice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys ready for the rest of the work we're gonna call tonight? Because we can put everything else away for the next one.
Is there any of you I can administer votes that we need for?
The special-
Excuse me?
Oh, the special events, yes.
Madam Chair, you may need to be spoke-
Uh, I can't take any more discussions at this point.
No, it's, you're, are you leaving, or are you saying?
We're, we have some more work to do.
Okay, the police are on their way, so they may want to speak with you guys, I was threatened before, I was threatened at your meeting, so I want you, he may need to speak with you, and I would like to speak with my lawyer if that's possible, if he's available.
Okay.
Thank you.
We do have a couple of things, and Jay just reminded me, that are critical, time-sensitive, so since we're here for the other work, can we get an approval of minutes?
I'm so moved.
By Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Raguskas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Under the discussion, carnival section three-point-two-six, carnival shows, fairs, and sidewalks, do you want to speak to it, or do you, yeah?
Did you want to pass these off? Go and just discuss these?
No.
Okay.
No, I, I want to get the discussion and we'll see how far we get. Because both of these are important.
Okay, so we had an issue come up in the zoning office recently, I, I guess in, in past practice, the planning and zoning administrator, once a carnival, show, fair, some sort of similar event, had already gone for zoning commission's administrative approval, the planning and zoning administrator would just sign off on that over the counter internally. I didn't want to take the liberty of, of necessarily continuing that, when I first started, I wanted to just continue kind of how things went until I got more comfortable with the zoning regulations and the players, so now that I am more comfortable, I feel like that, you know, if, if we want to give the planning and zoning administrator administrative approval to sign off on these things, then we should do it the correct way and make a text amendment, if the zoning commission wants to retain that right, they have the right to do that, but I presented the, the potential change that we have here. One other option that I could change for the proposed text, and do you guys have this? You should have received this.
Yeah, I received it, yeah.
Okay, is that, instead of just saying that it can be approved by the planning and zoning administrator, we could say that it can be approved by the planning and zoning administrator, if the event was already, if it's a new event, it would still need to go to the zoning commission for administrative approval, but if they're just returning for the second year, then the planning and zoning administrator can sign off on it, so there's a couple different alternatives that I didn't really, that weren't articulated in this initial, initial text amendment, and these are just for discussion, no votes necessarily.
Before I, before I answer your, get your question, the reason for this, I wanted to do this first, because later in the agenda, we have five items that we need to approve, of which, these are the ones upcoming, there were two other events that came up and went by before we could even meet, so we would approve every, every single event in town, unless we're making a change. Mr. Fuller?
Uh, yeah, uh, I don't, I know it's somewhere buried in my paperwork, the text amendment, I know what we did with the final, the extensions, where it gave you the latitude to come back to the commission if you felt the commission should review something, has, I don't recall off the top of my head, was that also written into this proposed amendment?
The one before us right now we're discussing?
Yeah.
No.
It's something that I feel comfortable adding, this way it gives staff an out to, this way everyone's able to cover everybody's bases, just in case you come across that really tricky one and you want some zoning commission guidance on it. The other thing I would take, like shows, fairs, sidewalk sales, those are small events, and I don't think it'd be fair to, to jam up zoning commission time, but a carnival is a big event, when you think about the amount of people that go there, the amount of noise and traffic and things of that nature, so I think either to go with the Plan B that you've mentioned about, if it's a routine event that has a history, that it could have administrative approval or, or staff approval, but I still would like for, for new carnivals, given the size and scope of, of what happens there, that we always take a look at it.
A carnival consists of any ride, even if it's one ride.
Then I think we need to, uh, look at the definition of carnival then.
Okay, my suggestion, when I looked at this, because you're gonna get a bunch of those, if they just bring in a America, not an America round, one of those little things that go in a truck?
Yeah.
My suggestion is to let, and this is what has happened in the past, the reason why the zoning commission didn't see them is-
Gary.
Mr. Lurzahn, yeah, Gary always approved them himself, alright, and if there was something of a larger, like the Coleman Brothers came to town, or something that was big, then besides running it through all the departments, he would then confer with the zoning commission to see if they wanted to handle it in administrative session. My suggestion is, is to formalize and go back to the way we were, but formalize it so that the adminis, the zoning and, planning and zoning administrator can approve these, they still require permits, they still go through all the departments for sign off, but if there is, in his opinion, a need that he wants to bring it before the zoning commission, he can, otherwise, you're gonna be going through the definition of shows, carnivals, sidewalk sales, big- sales, bake, they, they come in all sizes, all different capacities, and we'll find ourselves trying to redefine them every time we look around. And if you also look at the fact of whether they're new or not, every PTA sale is new. And anytime we make a change to an existing one, so I just saw, as somebody who's involved in a lot of events, I see a quagmire. And we would spend most of our agenda and special meetings, because all of these are time-sensitive. Usually what happens is, like, the PTA bake sale that we missed, it came up, they gave us a week's notice, and it was supposed to come before us for a zoning approval. It came and went before we even got it. So, most of these usually have a week's notice, which would mean that we would have to react quickly with meetings, or...
Why don't, why aren't they coming months ahead of time? Doesn't make any sense.
Because they don't, they're little outfits. They're little outfits, they don't think like that.
I mean, they have a bake sale at, at, you know, election day. They should know that. They should come to us at least a month in advance.
Would be nice, but that's assuming that they hit our agenda.
Should we have that, like, in, in, in the format of, they have to sign something, right?
Oh, they do.
Not a zoning document.
Not a zoning, they just go...
Well, doesn't the permit say you must, you know, comply two months in advance for this? Why don't we put that in there?
They can turn these, because right now, the recreation department and the, that handles that process can turn them around, especially the smaller ones, in a week.
Oh, okay, so then we don't worry about them.
Is there any sort of way? Is there any sort of way we could differentiate between intensity?
That's a matter of opinion.
It would be hard. I, I think, just for mine, I think that the best way to do it might be that, you know, if, it can be approved by the planning and zoning administrator, if, and can be sent to the zoning commission, if the planning and zoning administrator is uncomfortable approving it internally or over the counter, it would have to be a judgment call, though.
It's a judgment call. By the way, and I will remind, this goes through, every department has to sign off on it. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a process, it's a...
There's a big difference, though, between a little bake sale or sidewalk sale, and say the carnival down by LA Fitness and 99, which is a huge event, where there has been police activity, where there has been incidents.
And as you might already know, none of those have come before the zoning commission in the past. They were always handled internally through the administration, so that's why you haven't seen them. Up until this year, you have never seen them because of the fact that they have always been there. Excuse me?
The, the one I referenced, the one by 99 Restaurant, that's been before the zoning commission.
Been before many times.
The Coleman Brothers? That hasn't come before us?
Not the last couple of years.
Not that I know of.
Not for myself, no.
The first, after the first time, it didn't have to come back, it was just approved. Or it went through the normal channels.
Do you, do you have any new ones? You said...
Oh, yeah, the second page, you'll see about four or five of them. We're going to have to approve those.
Really? That's what that was? Because I didn't want to look at the, oh...
Yes, today, you have to look at Touch a Truck.
Wow.
The Art Guild, the Animal Rescue Fall Society, and the Poor at the Shore. Those are that, wait, and these are far enough in advance.
Those are the four new ones that... I get it.
Anyhow, so the, so Jay is trying to...
Let's take care of leaving out for the, for the zoning staff, if they need zoning commission of, guidance, that, that they could seek it.
Well, I think that's what Jay just said, that, that, the text is there, that the PNC administrator approves them, and provides the opportunity to, and I can't think of the words, but leaves open the opportunity to bring it to the zoning commission if necessary.
And do, do you want to see new events, or no? A first-time event, or no?
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah.
I don't.
Yeah.
I don't.
I would think it depends on the scale of the event.
You're going to see, first, everything is a first-time event. Everything is a first-time.
Is there any way we could look at square footage requested?
Now you're going to have to go out and, that's what I'm trying to say.
Work the paperwork and then base it on that.
Or maybe you put a threshold on, because one of the forms has... One of the forms has total number of attendees, so you could set the threshold that, you know, 500 people, I don't know. I mean, anything over 500 people in a new event has to go before, or anything over 500. I just don't know where all your comfort levels are on that.
That's a picnic area. I just found that out, all the picnic, all...
As long as there's a line in the stand where it's clear that if it's above this, it goes here, if it's below that, it's streamlined.
It's usually, that's why I said it's usually, unless we don't have a comfort level with the zoning administrator to know what is acceptable and not acceptable, every picnic that goes up 200, like at Booth Park, would have to be approved. I mean, every event would have to come. I really implore you to think about allowing the PNC administrator to approve them and use his discretion to bring it to the zoning commission when he feels he needs that guidance.
And then maybe we could come up with definitions that way, as enough case study comes forward, that carnival really is 2,000 people with multiple rides and god knows what else, whack-a-mole machines and whatever.
Sometimes it's three, three, three-day, week.
Yeah, duration is another...
Okay, so would you, would you like me to prepare the, the text amendment for next month? Do you want another look at it?
Yeah.
Are, are we looking to send this to planning and other departments for review?
We're going to send it to the planning commission for their initial review, as well as to the state of Connecticut and the Metropolitan Council of Governments.
Let's, let's put it towards review now, we could always modify and amend as we go along.
But the main changes that I will include in there will be that the planning and zoning administrator can approve, and the planning and zoning administrator can send to the zoning commission at any point.
And I would recommend when you...
For administrative review.
When you present this to the planning commission, it's very similar in the philosophy of the funnel site plan review, where your, where staff has the ability to defer back to the commission.
Okay, that's not a vote. That was guidance, so we're there.
Motion to defer...
You really, we don't have to motion on that. He's going to come back to you with the text amendment.
That's all, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
If you mind, the takeout restaurants versus dine-in restaurants, that was an opportunity. Can we leave that on the agenda for the next time? Let's move on to other items. These are the five, these...
Technically, there's a, a CEM site plan for Ferry Boulevard. I think we should, I'll just proceed to...
That was just denied, I don't think we have to do that.
You do. We have to deny the CAM application.
We have to deny the CAM application. Make a motion to deny.
I'll make a motion for the CAM site plan review for 382 Ferry Boulevard.
Second by Mr. Raguskas. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Other items? Do we need to do one of these at a time, or can we do them in the group?
Looks like the Touch a Truck is the really most urgent one here, 4-2.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, the amended zoning fee schedule, do we need to do that today? Okay, so the zoning fee schedule, we can put off to the next administrative send. So now we have...
Just hold on to your schedules for next month.
Yeah, so now we have Tuck, Touch a, Touch a Truck, Coastal Arts Guild, that's an art show, the Animal Rescue Fall Festival, that's the one that's over at Paradise Green, and Poor at the Shore. Is that the beat?
Just a, just a quick question, just for clarification. Do we know what the date or date range for, for the shore is?
We do, yes. It's not until, and let's see, it's not until next fall, let's see, Port Shore, I'm sorry, Saturday, May 13th. So, May. I can tell you that they have been meeting with all the town departments extensively, just due to the size of it, because I think they're asking for, they've got, are expecting 2,000.
Yeah, and I believe the Shore Beats Commission gave it the go-ahead, so the appropriate parks commission... Okay, let's, let's take these in order. Motion to approve the Truck Easter egg hunt on April 7, uh, 2nd?
Actually, I think you can do one motion for all four.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to, it's a quad motion, to take, to approve the Touch a Truck Easter egg hunt on April 2nd, the Coastal Arts Guild event on 9/9/17 through, September 9th and 10th, 2017, the Stars Fall Festival on October 8th, and the Port of Shore on the, on the May dates, as mentioned.
I'll second his quad motion.
Just one question also, yeah, let me finish this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. On the same note, and I know Jay doesn't even know this, there's more functions that are going to be coming up between now and our next month. How do you want Jay to handle it? Do you want him to hold them, deny them, or wait for us? What do you want him to do? Because he's probably going to get another few of them between, before we meet again.
How last-minute some of these organizations are, if they could wait two weeks, we do have that administrative slot open.
No, we don't have a meeting yet. We would have to schedule one in April. That was the one month that we did not have.
Oh, was that because of the holidays?
Holidays, so we don't have a meeting scheduled.
How about if, if we need to meet, we meet?
You want to meet to...
If they're re, if they're repeats, he can sign off on them. No?
You, the question is, do you want to have...
No, we want to keep it by the, by the book, by the rules.
Yes, the question is, he's looking for some guidance, all right? Do you want to give him the guidance to say, approve them unless he feels that he needs to hold them off to meet with us and give him that latitude, or do you want him to hold everything until we meet again, which will be in May? No, I'm sorry, end of April, end of, April 25th.
Yeah. I'd say let's defer to the planning and zoning administrator's judgment if he feels that we need to meet on something that's large enough, let's call it an administrative meeting. We could always go over goal-setting stuff during that point.
Yeah, we can, we can, but we did a lot of work tonight. So, he has the guidance. Use your judgment, pretty much.
I just didn't want there to be a, a big event, and then someone here saying, "Well, we didn't know about it."
Yeah.
And I'm not looking to bring trivial things before anybody, I just want to make sure that...
Trying to put some...
Should we maybe be notified when an event is approved? Certainly, related to the chairman.
Yeah, we shoot you an email. Maybe you want to go.
Well, then we can't say that we knew nothing about it if we find out that...
Yeah, we...
I'll take an email.
Get a monthly report or something.
Yeah, there's no harm in that. Thank goodness for email. Is there any need, anybody who wants to discuss any of the goal-setting items? I know we have to, and we will reschedule the joint meeting with planning.
Yeah, I didn't want to touch that until we, we sat down with planning.
We, we, everybody's committed to it, the, the dates were working against us, Mr. Solhavy and I both agreed, we're just trying to pick a date.
He also had a mother nature against us, too.
Yeah, so, so there's a commitment on our part. So if there's no burning desire, then ask for an adjournment.
Go ahead.